All right, ladies and gentlemen. Adequate notice for this meeting has been provided. Should any member of this board have reason to believe this meeting is being held in violation of that act, they should so state at this time. Hearing them will start with a pledge of allegiance.
Let's believe the 1975 United States of America and two republics which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Okay, Karen Rolco?
Yes, Mr. Bezare.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Belasco.
Here.
Mr. Crowley.
Here.
Mr. Gorgone.
Yes, here.
Mayor Mullick. Councilmember Jaeger.
Here.
Mrs. Reed. Mr. Lundholm. Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Peduses.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we start off with the minutes of the March 14th meeting for correction or approval. Any corrections? Motion to approve? So moved. Thank you, Lou.
Second.
Thank you. Bob?
Motion by Mr. Belasco, seconded by Mr. Gorgone. Mr. Belasco?
Yes.
Mr. Gorgone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Abstain.
Mr. Peduses?
Abstain.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bezare?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have, I think we have, are we not?
Oh, we do.
We have the resolution. Sorry, I skipped ahead. Resolution 411, 2023, Cleveland 1. Thomas D. Donato, Cape May Cove LLC, 1105 Pittsburgh Avenue and 40 Harbor Cove, Block 1172, Lots 4, and 1134 Lafayette Street, Block 1113, Lot 8. Any corrections to that resolution? Motion, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorgone, seconded by Mr. Belasco. Mr. Belasco?
Yes.
Mr. Gorgone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Peduses?
Yes.
Mr. I'm sorry.
You can't vote yes.
Oh, then.
I don't know, just I asked. Do I have to vote last time?
Yes, yes, okay.
You vote no?
Abstain.
You just don't vote, you abstain.
Okay, Mr. Crowley abstains?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Malloy?
I abstain.
Yeah, abstain.
Okay, Mr. Peduses?
Abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bezare?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we move on to recommendations for implementation of changes in the city master plan, development regulations, and zoning map. So I'll let Craig take it from here. It's hopefully tonight, as he called it, low lying fruit.
Right.
We can hopefully all agree on without much.
So, good evening, everyone. I prepared a memorandum dated April 6, 2023. As you recall, when we sat down and we took a look at the recommended changes in the city's master plan, there's approximately 44 recommended changes that were in there. This memorandum essentially addresses 10 of those items. So it's approximately a quarter of the recommendations that were in there. I've made revisions to the code. You've seen language added or language that's been stricken from the ordinance through those 10 sections. So what, what I, what the board has to do here is forward these to city council for a recommendation to be adopted. They're obviously consistent with the master plan because they are directly changes that are recommended in the master plan. And I'll be happy to go through these item by item or if there's any questions with regards to them. I would like to speak about item, recommendation number 12, which starts on page four. I know the board asked me to do a little analysis, and this is the changes along El Myra Street, opposite of Venice Avenue. There was a recommendation to change two lots that have been developed with single-family dwellings to the adjoining R3 zoning district. That was the recommendation. The board recommended that I do a further analysis and see if there was any other lots along El Myra Street that could be changed. And I did that analysis, and that's highlighted on page four. But to highlight that, the only other lot that's really developable currently holds the temporary substation for Atlantic City Electric where they're doing the improvement. So it doesn't make sense to include that lot at this time. It has, you know, who knows what it's going to be developed with in the future.
Actually, let's, let's take a step back because they, he got approvals for three duplexes there.
That, that's correct, but I don't know whether those, that use, that has been abandoned, but currently there's a use on there that is not consistent with the R3 development. So I don't want to.
My, my understanding, I know Tommy O'Hara fairly well, it's his lot. And he, they're renting his space.
Okay.
Till they get the, the main station up, up and functioning. Is that correct, Lou?
Yes, that is.
Yes, that's correct.
So I don't know that he's abandoning the approvals that he's, that he received.
Right, I don't know, I was unaware.
So I would, in my opinion, I think that that should be treated the same as the other two lots.
Okay, so we can, we can make that recommendation. Just so everyone is aware, it's a little bit of a higher lift when you add a lot that's not recommended. You're essentially making a zoning change to something that was not recommended during the master plan process. So there is a higher threshold without, with noticing and those types of things when we, if that lot is to be added to the R3 district. But we certainly can make that recommendation.
That's Lot 20? That's Lot 16.
It's Lot 16.
The big, the bigger lot, the one that has the temporary.
Right. It's got the fenced-in temporary electrical enclosure right now.
That's across the street on the other side.
Yes.
Craig, does the fact that they received residential approval in the past go to the change to a residential zoning? Does that?
Well, it makes, it makes sense to do it. I mean, all of the lots, the pattern of development that's occurring there is consistent with the R3. That, and that lot, that larger one where the temporary substation is, was approved under the R3 zoning also. But the use that's there now is not that. So that, I was a little hesitant to recommend we throw that in there at this time.
I have a vague recollection of that, triplex or duplex?
Yes, I think it was three duplexes.
I think it started out as three, and I think they revised the plans and created two lots. I think it was a little too dense than they originally submitted.
And wasn't it before board? It was before.
It was before the zoning board. Because it was a used farm.
At the time, they knew they were going to be renting it out. I think that's in the resolution or something. Am I misremembering?
I don't recall that part of it. I don't, it was, it was a surprise.
That was in front of us, Craig.
It was in front of us.
Was it?
That was, yeah.
Okay, it was a subdivision application. That's right.
It was in front of us.
And it was, and it was three, as I recall, three, three buildings.
Okay.
Now, I'm not sure whether it was three or two down. I'm not sure.
But, but the point is, it was residential.
It's, we, there certainly had an approval for residential lots.
Right.
On that.
Right.
And I can't remember, I know they initially started out as three, and it may have evolved into two lots. I'm not sure, but there, there was a residential approval for it.
Either way, moving to the R3.
So we can make that recommendation to.
Right.
To include that.
It makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I would think, I would think that the fact that prior approvals would justify whatever argument you have to make is not included in the master plan.
Are, are there any other undeveloped lots right around there? So the, the lots to the northwest or the top of that little map inset. Right. It's all encumbered.
Towards the creek.
That's all encumbered by wetlands along Cape Island Creek. So it's very unlikely that there will be any further development.
I think, I think that's city-owned as well, isn't it?
Some of those lots are city-owned, yes.
What happens if, if that thing stays there for 10 years? But are we doing anything that we shouldn't be doing if it's going to be there for that long? I don't know.
I don't think.
It's what?
The approval.
Well, I don't know.
No, the approval for Atlantic City Electric says that it's temporary, and as soon as that, that, the main substation goes back operational, that has to be decommissioned.
They don't want to maintain two sides.
Yeah, they don't.
And that's, that's ridiculous.
I don't think there's any.
Mike, their, their timetable was in months.
Okay, well, then it's, it's a no-brainer then to make it, to make it the R3.
Yeah, it's a little island sitting there that would be a commercial.
The only thing we do, have to come back again.
Yeah.
And if we can take care of it now, they don't have to come back.
Right, yeah.
Could you identify the lot numbers again?
So on page four, I actually, in handwritten language on that map, I kind of highlighted what the uses are and what the block and lot numbers are.
I think for that application, we applied the R3 standards anyway.
We did. There's been a pattern of establishing the R3 zoning along that, along those C5 lots that have been developed.
Dennis, you see it?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's across the street.
Everybody's on board with that?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, so in here, it says not to include that. We're going to change that recommendation to that we are including Lot 16 into the recommendation to be added to the R3 zoning district. All of the other issues that were in here were relatively simple. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to tackle each item.
My only question, I guess, is we, on the shower enclosures. Now we're, now we're on from a maximum.
What number, Bill?
Uh, we're on page nine. C6C, C2.
Six C? That's on page eight.
It's on nine, the one I have is nine.
Yeah, so the change is on page nine.
Right, okay.
I included that whole.
I mean, I'm not sure six is a common arbitrary number. I don't know if that's, if, if that's.
So, so the reason I came up with six is because when we see board applications that are asking for variances from it, that's the size they cite. So that's, that's how I asked.
You don't want to, you don't want to leave it unlimited?
Correct, so.
Okay. That's what they made me do. That's what they made me do, four by six.
So.
Okay.
Oh, I'm stuck with the four by four.
Don't gain any weight, Mike.
Or, or any tag teams in there.
That's right.
Everybody else, everybody else read these, through these, understands the changes that were?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, if you want to, Greg, go through them, that's fine. I don't know that that's necessary.
Yeah, they were, like I said, they were, they were the low-hanging fruit, and they were the simpler ones to change. So after we endorse this, these recommendations, I'd like to talk about moving forward.
Yes.
So maybe we can, do we want to vote on these changes?
Yeah, we should do that, yes.
Before we do, let me just ask one question about number 41.
Page, please.
Page 12.
This is the one where patios can go up to five feet from the property line? Patios and porches, would that be for the front of the house as well?
No, they're, they're considered porches. That's considered part of the principal structure. So this is only for your, like.
So somebody can't put it, would this be a deck across the front of the house?
This is decks. So the issues that we've been having is patios, decks in the rear.
Right.
Are, are held to half of the lot width.
I, I got that.
So you get these weird insetting, and they're not symmetrical to the main, the principal structure. So there's often applicants' requests for relief from that. And I think the discussion was during the, during the master plan was that lot coverage should govern. So we don't care how big your deck is, you design it. You're allowed to have, the lot coverage is going to establish how much you can do in your rear yard, and that's the freedom that you have to develop your lot line, so long as you're meeting your other setbacks, et cetera.
That five feet is not changing, that's already.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking about somebody who could use this to put a, a deck across the front of their property as an extended front porch, that would.
That's part of the building.
So, no, because that, that case is not going to happen because this is in the section of dwelling accessory uses. So these, these things are established as an accessory use, and you can't have an accessory use between the principles, the face of the principal structure and the street. You can't put anything in the front yard.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
I have an inquiry, one 6B, it just, just seems kind of vague to me.
What page, what page are you going to be?
Uh, page nine, 14. No activities may be permitted which create a public nuisance or interfere with the use of adjacent residential lots. Who's going to make that determination?
Um, 6B?
B, that's, that's in our ordinance now. That's not, that's not a change that's being anticipated.
Well, who does make that?
You've got a, you've got a, we have a zoning.
That's.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement zoning officer.
Police.
Okay, I didn't know that, okay.
Hey, I did have a question about that section, too. And as I, as I read that whole section, these requirements for what are called single and two-family dwellings, they don't.
Accessory, accessory uses.
What's that?
This is for accessory uses.
Right, on, on page nine.
Right.
They, they don't apply to section B of that. They, they don't apply to section B of that ordinance, which would be multifamily dwellings.
This is for single or two-family dwellings?
I understand that, I understand that, but let's, let's, I would just, I just looked at number 6 where it said, no activities may be permitted which create a public nuisance, that was what you were looking at. And I thought to myself, that language doesn't appear in the multifamily dwelling section.
Does not.
Right. Which seems to mean that the ordinance is saying.
It's okay.
The ordinance is saying it's okay to have activities which create a public nuisance if it's a multifamily dwelling. I, I just, it's not on the point that we're raising here, but it is a point of whether or not the code is clear enough to regulate activity.
Well, there's.
I was tasked with addressing the recommendations in there, yeah, so, so we can't, we can't revisit the master plan process. This is more of implementation of those recommendations.
Yeah.
But I, I understand your, like, I don't, to be honest with you, no activities may be permitted which create a public nuisance, I mean, this is, there's a lot of gray area in here.
Right.
I don't like, I don't like that section at all.
Right. It's even more gray when you get down to the second part, which is multifamily dwellings.
It's an issue not connected with our discussion here, but.
Correct.
As I read the ordinance in its whole, I, it seemed to me to be a bit inconsistent, that's all.
Yeah, very gray language in there.
Craig, I'm sorry, I missed where we ended the discussion on the section about patios.
Okay, patio, back to patios?
Well, yeah, it's just, I, I think I mentioned it when we looked at this in advance of the meeting. If we're going to be fixing the ordinance, we can just fix that typo.
12.
The typo in B, which is now A. Page? What page? The patio one.
What, what page are we on, sorry?
Uh, page 12 or 14, where we were before.
All right, sorry.
That's okay.
What, what?
The typo is in within?
Yeah, in within.
Within, in within, okay, gotcha. Maybe constructed within, so we're going to strike in.
Might as well.
All right, any other comments? Get a motion to approve these changes? Send them to council? We probably shouldn't be sending these piecemeal.
So that, that was another thing that I wanted to discuss, so.
Let's get, let's, let's get the motion first.
Do your vote, and then we'll.
I'll move the.
I think, I think Bob did.
Yeah, but can I just, hold on, before we do, jump right into that. Craig, we're not, what is it that we're moving in? Your report, the changes outlined in your report? I just want to make sure it's clear, because unless we're going to do a separate resolution, the minutes and the vote are going to be it. So, removing your report?
My report with the, and these are the word.
With one additional change now.
Right.
Taking out the word in.
Right, but, but also, the sec, lot 16, I thought you recommended not doing that, so your report recommends not.
Correct, so there's, there's been two changes to my report.
Outline those, so we.
And the one is to add the lot.
16.
I think it's 16, Block 1061, which currently contains the temporary Atlantic City Electric substation. That is now recommended to be added into the R3 district. Okay, so that's the, that's the one deviation from my report. And the second deviation is to fix that typo that you just recommended on page 12.
Okay, and the basis for doing that change in R, in the R3, is that we believe it's already been approved for a residential zone, residential use?
There's been residential uses approved there that are consistent with the R3 zoning bulk requirements.
Okay, so that's how, that's why it's not spot zoning. We're, we're looking at a holistic addition, and, because that does have a higher standard, so.
Craig, across the street, R3A?
It's R3. There's another section.
You've got A on here, right?
No, that, that's, that, that block that's surrounded by Bank Street and Elmira is R3A.
Okay.
If you see, this yellow section up here, it's the R3, it goes all the way out to, it essentially runs the whole length of, of Lafayette Street coming into town.
Right.
That is essentially all R3, and then it kind of wraps around the corner into Elmira Street.
And Craig, you mentioned, and you're the master plan expert, I'm merely, you know, I deal with it when I have to deal with it. You mentioned different notice requirements, and I think that that's true when you're changing someone's lot when it's other than in a master plan.
Right.
You have to give them individualized notice, do you not?
Correct, so there's, there's a higher.
We're going to do that for this lot.
We're going to have to, right, so that's, I just want to make sure that everyone's aware, there's a little higher threshold to noticing because that recommendation was not in the, in the master plan recommendation. So we're, we're sort of deviating from that, for good reason, but essentially, you're allowed to do zoning changes, that, like, the noticing for the master plan allows you to do those zoning changes without the higher threshold of noticing.
Who would, who would do, who would notice that?
So the city council will have to do that.
We, we don't have a problem where the owner of the property is going to be disappointed that it's being changed to residential from commercial, right?
To my knowledge, I don't think so.
We can't speak for that owner, but.
I did not reach out to him, so I can't.
It's relatively uncontroversial, but I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that if we, if we didn't make that change, you wouldn't have to get noticed.
I wish we knew whether there's two or three lots, three houses going there, though. I mean, to me, it's like. I don't think that much matters.
But that wouldn't change it, we do.
Yeah.
Should there have been a, if we approved this thing, should there have been some kind of a subdivision recorded then, what we did?
I don't know that it was ever recorded.
That's what I'm saying, all right, if it wasn't recorded, then there's, there's no way to know what.
That's why, that's why I was saying, I, I think he's, that it might have been abandoned, and he may have to come back, but regardless, he's going to come back, and if we, if we put the R3.
We'll notice.
The intent was going to put residential there, so let's just do it, let's just.
Let's do it, and let's make sure that he gets noticed, and that he's, he's good with it.
Right, he's going to be noticed, and he's going to have an opportunity to say whether he wants to be in or not, so.
All right, so the motion you're making is a motion to move amendments to the ordinance, recommend amendments to the ordinance consistent with Craig's report, with the exception of Lot 16, which is going to recommend it being residential, and one typo that we outlined. So that's the motion I recommend.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Gorgone, seconded by Mr. Belasco. Mr. Belasco?
Yes.
Mr. Gorgone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Peduses?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bazare?
Yes.
Thank you.
How is that going to be communicated to the city council?
So that's, this is my next topic of conversation, is logistically, as I went through there and made those changes and addressed those 10 items, I did look at other sections that, where there were recommendations made. There could be changes to those sections, other changes that are based on other recommendations. So do we want to send these piecemeal, make revisions to these certain sections, knowing that they're going to be revised again, or do we, do we develop all of these that we can get done, and then submit everything forward to council for one big change?
I would, I would send the ones that you've approved before it gets messed up again.
Okay.
Just get those done, and then you can talk about the others and do those separately, because the bigger you make the package, the more problems you can have.
There's the legal advice, so there we go.
Yeah, and I would, I would agree, I think that it's best that you do them through the steps. I don't think council's going to have any problem with that.
Yeah, I just want everyone to know that there probably will be changes to these same sections based on other, other recommendations.
Well, my question was a little bit more mechanical, because in the past, sometimes I would do a resolution for things like this, but sometimes we don't, so I'll do whatever you want. But if we're just going to have the minutes or a letter from you going up there, I just wonder how it gets to council.
I would recommend a resolution be done. There have been challenges to, like, changes in zoning especially. I think it's just good to dot the i and cross the t on that type of change.
Okay, I think for amending the master plan, you should do a resolution, it's just, I don't want to, you know, pressure you guys, but I think that you should.
So the proposed resolution is going to look very much like your document right here.
I've, I've seen him include my document as an appendix, so you don't have to retype, you know.
What, what we usually do.
By reference.
We have a system in our offices where I, I get his reports in Word, so that I don't alter it. But Craig is going to send it to us, but he's going to alter that paragraph 16, or the Lot 16 thing, so that it has engineer speak and planner speak in it, and then I'll make that part of the resolution.
Yeah.
And say in opening that make it consistent with the master plan, and, you know.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking to have it as efficient as possible for a councilperson